Good evening. We will now call a special meeting of the Laco City Council on November 17th, 2020, to order at 6:56 PM. On March 16th, 2020, the Governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his State of Disaster authority. The change was effective March 16th, 2020 until further notice or until the State of Disaster declaration expires. In accordance with physical distancing guidelines and while providing as much transparency as possible, this meeting will not be open to the public. This meeting is being broadcast live at WCCC.TV. The audio is also being recorded. The video and audio recordings will be available to the public. According to the Governor and Attorney General's statutes that may require face-to-face interactions between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided however that the governmental body must offer alternative methods of communication with their public officials. This includes public comment on agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to submit their written comments on a listed agenda item were asked to submit their comments to the City Secretary's office by 11:00 AM today. The City Secretary will read into the record any comments submitted for items on the agenda at the appropriate time. Welcome to our guests, our newly-elected Mayor and newly-elected Councilmember and re-elected Councilmember, our President in our Council chambers, the Boston Theater, along with a small number of family and friends who are physically distanced from each other based on whether they live in the same household. The first item of business tonight will be to canvass the November 3rd, 2020 election results. And I will turn this over to the City Secretary, Esmeralda Hudson. Esmeralda?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, as custodian of records for the City of Waco, pursuant to the Waco, Texas Code of Ordinance, Section 2-111, and as City of Waco election registrar under Texas Election Code 67.006, I present to you the certified election returns which were delivered to me via email from the McLennan County Election Administrator on November 10th of 2020. Pursuant to the election services contract executed on the 16th day of September of 2020, the City of Waco ballots for the November 3rd, 2020 general and special election were counted, tallied, and certified on behalf of the City of Waco by Kathy E. Van Wolf, McLennan County Election Administrator. The original certified election returns have been kept in my custody since my receipt of the records. I have provided Mayor Dever with the precinct tabulations in a sealed envelope, and a copy of the returns forwarded to each council member and includes A) the votes received by precinct for each candidate, the number of voters who cast a ballot in each precinct, and C) the total votes received.
All right. Thank you, Esmeralda. I will open the medically sealed envelope. (laughter) Esmeralda, would you please read the certified election results for the official election?
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council, on November 3rd, 2020, the legal votes cast for the City of Waco general election for Mayor, for Waco Mayor, Dylan Meek, 22,644 votes, 68.94% of the votes. David Morrow received 10,202 votes, or 31.06% of the votes, with total votes cast of 32,846. For City Councilmember District 1, Randy Gober, 1,274, 28.49% of the votes. Andrea J. Bearfield, 3,198, with 71.51% of the votes. Total votes cast, 4,472 votes. For City Councilmember District 3, Josh Borderood, received 4,552 votes, for 51.41% of the votes. Aubrey Robbie Robertson received 3,830, for 48.59% of the votes, and the total votes cast were 7,882. On November 3rd, 2020, the legal votes cast for the City of Waco special election, City Councilmember District 4, Darius Ewing, 1,304 votes, for 31.26% of the vote. Kelly Palmer, 1,955 votes, for 46.86% of the votes. And Rick Allen, for 913 votes, for 21.88% of the votes. Total votes cast were 4,172 votes. The following persons have received the required number of votes for the respective offices and can be declared elected. Waco Mayor, Dylan Meek, 22,644 votes. City Councilmember District 1, Andrea J. Bearfield, 3,198 votes. City Councilmember District 3, Josh Borderood, 4,052 votes. In the special election, City Councilmember District 4, Kelly Palmer, 1,955 votes.
Thank you, Esmeralda. As Mayor of the City of Waco, Texas, in meeting with the City Council sitting as the canvassing board to canvass the general and special election on November 3rd, 2020, on November 17th, 2020 at Waco, Texas, I do hereby certify that the totals presented are all votes received by each candidate. According to the certified tabulation as read into the record by the City Secretary, and I further certify that the vote totals include early voting by precinct received under Section 87.1231 of the Texas Election Code. Our first item of business tonight will be Resolution 2020-843 declaring the results of the general election for Mayor and Council Districts 1 and 3, and the special election for City Council District 4 held on November 3rd, 2020. We will now consider Resolution 2020-843 declaring the results of the general election for Mayor and Council Districts 1, 3, and the special election for City Council District 4 held on November 3rd, 2020. Is there a motion?
Yeah, okay. I'll move approval of the resolution.
I'm sorry. I need to ask for a form of motion. Let me just read it in and then we can get that. I'd like to request a motion that the City Council accept the certified election results as recited above and as received by the City of Waco elections registrar's final and that the person shown to have received the required number of votes for the respective office be declared elected for the Mayor, District 1, and District 3 for a two-year term ending May 2022, and the City Councilmember District 4 will fill the unexpired term ending May of 2021. Is there a motion?
I will move approval if the motion is stated.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Your motion and a second and a discussion. Please pull the council.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Holmes is still trying to log in, so I just wanted to give you that. I sent him a link, so he's going to try that now. So he won't be able to vote on this at this point. Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Kennard?
Yes.
Sabido?
Yes.
Bearfield?
Yes.
Dever?
Yes. Motion carries.
I am on now. Missed it.
Did you like the vote on that item?
Voting yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I present this certificate of election to certify that at a general and special election held on November 3rd, 2020, Dylan Meek was the newly-elected Mayor of the City of Waco. Andrea J. Bearfield was newly-elected Waco City Councilmember District 1. Josh Borderood was newly-elected Waco City Councilmember District 3. And Kelly Palmer was newly-elected Waco City Councilmember District 4. The signed and sealed certificates are at your place on the dais. And we will now proceed with comments, statements, and presentations by the city staff and council members. Esmeralda?
Yes, Mayor. As part of the agenda, we've scheduled an opportunity for comments and presentations by city staff and the council, and I will ask Bradley Ford, our city manager, to begin with the first presentations. And I will, I'm sorry, Bradley, just to make sure that council members should have received some packages, and the first group of packages that we are going to be presenting, the city manager will be the one that is a blue box from the City of Waco.
Thank you.
Thanks, Esmeralda. It's my privilege, Mayor and councilmembers, to get to acknowledge three people that have just done a remarkable job serving our community, and I'm going to acknowledge those three now. I'm going to start with Councilmember Darius Ewing. I recognize our time with you has been short, Darius, but I want to thank you for stepping into the role of councilmember during 2020. We, as a staff, have absolutely enjoyed the last few months, particularly appreciating your team-first approach. Gratitude is one of the most powerful and underutilized leadership tools, but it's really your second nature. And in the months you've spent on the council, you've quickly made your own way and identified several opportunities for improved city services and solutions. Our city staff is hard at work to deliver on those improvements in 2021, specifically bringing forward a capital improvements dashboard, as well as improved citizen service request tools. Councilmember Ewing, on behalf of the City of Waco, as Esmeralda mentioned, you should have received a package from us, and in that you'll find a small token that reads, "An appreciation of Darius Ewing for dedicated service to the people of Waco as Councilmember District 4 from June 2020 to November 2020." (applause) I haven't opened it yet. I did a really good job of keeping it closed. I don't know what the lighting's like. Probably can't see all the writing, but I can tell you that I'm really thankful, and this is the closest I'll ever get to giving an official awards acceptance speech, so I'm putting it like I would some sort of, you know, other award. But thank you sincerely. Yeah, it has been just the most, more than I could have asked for in this time, getting a chance to learn from the other members of council and work with city staff and learn from you guys and your experiences, and really, really just taking in just the camaraderie and the way that every piece needs to do its job to have things work for the better members of citizens that we exist to serve here. So thank you for that.
Hey, Darius, I'd just like to say, it's been a pleasure to spend working with you, and I'm sorry that you came into a time where we didn't get to meet in person, but you still established rapport right away with the council remotely, and you are a really bright young leader, and I am really looking forward to seeing the other things that you do, whether it's in elected office or in some other way. But please stay engaged with leadership in our city because you've got a lot to offer, and really appreciated the time that we got to spend together.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to move to our second, and I do understand that councilmembers will have an opportunity to recognize Darius further later in the agenda. I'm going to move to the second presentation by city staff, and that's, of course, to Councilmember John Kennard. On behalf of the team here at City Councilmember, we want to acknowledge your eight years of service on council and multiple more years prior to that on other boards and commissions. You've been a consistent voice to drive government innovation with an eye towards greater transparency and efficiency in our operations, and you've really been a tried and true voice supporting our capital improvements, supporting the implementation of new development regulations, as well as most recently serving in a leadership capacity on the COVID-19 Health Response Team and the Mayor's COVID-19 Work Groups. Of all the projects I can think of that you've been involved in, I did want to specifically highlight your networking and advocacy in Washington, DC that helped bring multiple grant awards and millions of dollars to Waco to support lead abatement in older structures. Councilmember Kennard, on behalf of the City of Waco, we present you again with the small token memorializing your service that reads, "An appreciation of John Kennard for dedicated service to the people of Waco as Councilmember District 3 from May 2012 through November 2020."[826.12][826.12](applause) Thank you.
So is this the time? Thank you, guys. Is this the time for, like, real comments? So I've got, like, eight years' worth kind of built up that I want to say, or are we saving that for later after the other kind of presentations?
I think we're saving that for later, and I think I jumped the gun with Darius. Sorry about that, Darius.
Then I will just say thank you very much, Bradley. I'd like my award.
Thank you. And I think at this point, we, if I could ask Julie, or a member of the City Secretary's office, to start the video that was created by Municipal Information highlighting the contributions of both Councilmember Ewing and Councilmember Kennard.
Got to love technology.
Well, the beautiful thing about the process is that this had, we haven't done this before, so this isn't wrong.
Yeah, I watched it. Yep.
There you go.
John, this might be one of those moments.
Exactly. Just laying right on back. That's it.
Can you hear us now, Andrea?
Yes, sir, I sure can.
All right, maybe we can get back to it.
Okay. Well, good.
All right.
I told the best joke ever for everybody in the audience. It was really good. Y'all missed it.
Say more nice things about the mayor now.
So our last, you know, the last person, obviously, I want to highlight is Mayor Kyle Dever, and, you know, he's spent the last eight years with us, and city staff certainly appreciates him. Mayor, your care and compassion and leadership have really been on display since the day you walked in. And while many will likely remember you for your sincere and unwavering leadership during COVID, we can look all around Waco and see your fingerprints on many community-changing initiatives. I want to say thank you for your friendship and your composure in all circumstances, particularly thank you for putting all Wacoans on your agenda. Thank you for leading this council with high regard for trust and ethics, and thank you for leaving the council and our community in a better position than you found it. Rarely does the right leader come along at the right time, and Mayor Dever, you are the right person for all of us. So on behalf of the City of Waco, Mayor, you should have received two tokens that read, "An appreciation of Kyle Dever for the dedicated service to the people of Waco as Councilmember District 5 from May 2012 through May 2016," and "An appreciation of dedicated service to the people of Waco as Mayor from May 2016 through November 2020." Mayor, thank you so much.[1226.75][1226.75](applause)
Thank you, Bradley. I really appreciate those words, and it's been a true pleasure working with you and the rest of your staff. It's, you can't describe it, so thank you.
All right. At this point, Esmeralda, I think I'm turning that back over for presentations from councilmembers to councilmembers.
So for our first presentation, I'll ask Mayor Proton Bearfield will present the gift from the City Council to Councilmember Ewing. Mayor Bearfield, you can, if you'd like, step up the dais to your spot, and then you'll be able to use that mic right now.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Esmeralda. So I don't know if you can see Darius. See? Okay. So I just wanted to say that we, Councilmember Ewing on behalf of City Council, we wanted to present you with a small token of appreciation for your service on the City Council and filling in as our District 4 councilmember. We know it was a brief time, but your presence has been felt, and we look forward to watching you grow within, in whatever your next endeavors are, as Mayor Dever said, whether they be political or whether they just be continually socially impactful. But this is just a little something from us to you, so we appreciate you.[1339.25][1339.25](applause)
So Councilmember Ewing, we should have a box there that's labeled "From the City Council," and you're welcome to open that.
The other one that's here on my bed. Open this thing up. Ribbon is really something.
We all need to hear all that paper ripping and foolishness. That's what makes it fun.
Did you guys talk to my wife about this? New coffee grinder for me? Is that what you guys talked to her about? Just to tell you how I've been complaining about the other one for a few months? Thank you, guys. Wow, that's amazing. I, that, the best gifts are ones that are thoughtfully useful, and this will be used every day, and now my wife can stop hearing me complain about how the coffee, never mind. Thank you. Sorry. Sorry. Thank you.[1414.12][1414.12](applause)
And Mayor and Council, this would be the opportunity that the council can share a few words for Councilmember Ewing.
And I'll jump, and I jumped the gun, but I'll let it to the other councilmembers who would like to speak, please.
This is Holmes. Darius, even though you were on council for just a short period of time, I was impressed by how you got it to speed on fairly complex issues quickly in the city and were productive in making intelligent comments on things that took me years to figure out. So you did great while you were on council, and I appreciate your service to the city, and I appreciate your value to the Waco business community as well, and especially your stay involved in public service in one way or another. Thanks, Darius.
Thank you.
Hey, Darius, it's been an absolute, excuse me, an absolute joy in getting to work with you these past couple of months. I remember when I first, we sat down and had coffee, and you talked about your interest in serving on City Council, and I think Mayor Dever has said this before, I was like, man, this guy is young. But you have proven to bring something unique with a different perspective to the table, and I know that the impact that you've made on the Waco City Council in just a couple of months that we've worked together, I truly appreciate it, man. And so I know that our friendship still will continue after this, and so I just look forward to things that you're going to do in the future, so congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, you stepped in in a really difficult time, and I was, been very impressed at how well you represented your district and its citizens, the, as my colleagues have said, your ability to contribute from day one, the solutions you brought, the work you did, how energetic, active, and diligent you were, and just, and how well you were able to, you know, get along with us, even though we could never be together in the same room, which really, which really was a hindrance in terms of forming those relationships, but, and really be able to kind of dig into some of the work. But you, you really did do a great job, and I'm looking forward to seeing what is next for you, and hopefully we can continue to work on something in the future. So it's been, it really has been a delight and a pleasure, and I'm, yeah, I appreciate you.
Thanks, John. I think that's every member of council.
I think so. So our next presentation is going to be made from the City Council, from Councilmember Sabido, and he'll, I'll take it away.
Well, it is an absolute honor and a pleasure to talk about this next gentleman. When I first joined council, this is, and I'm going to call him John because we're friends, so I'm going to put out all the formalities of Councilmember Kennard, but when I first met John, you know, he was probably the one that I knew the least on council and probably the one that I've gotten to know the best since I've served together. He was a definitely a guiding force for me when I first joined. I knew that any question that I had, that he could help me answer them, and he was even at my orientation, so that tells you how committed he was. And John, it has been truly a joy to get to know you professionally on the City Council, personally as friends, and like Darius, I know that our friendship is not going to stop here. I mean, it's going to continue to grow, and so I also truly appreciate all of your work and expertise and your out-of-the-box ideas of how we can make our government, our local government, more efficient and effective. And so with that, you also should have a gift, and I'm going to ask you to open it, please.
Bless you. And I went ahead and got some of the ribbon off just to make things a little more streamlined for us here, because you can still hear the rustling of the paper, so I haven't, I didn't cheat too much. Ah, see, now, you know the way to my heart, because it's a Balcones box, and that is, ooh, what is this? Oh, that's beautiful. It's a, it's a, sorry, I don't want to drop it. It's a, it's a beautiful Balcones, Balcones de Cantor. Is that the right word? Yeah. That's a stopper bottle, which is, and the other piece in it seems to be stuck in the box. Hold on just a second. That's, that's what she said. Here we go. All right, here we go. It's got the top there. All right, perfect, perfect. That's, oh, this is beautiful. That's, I, it's hard to see with my background, but, yeah, there it is. There it, there it went. Okay, hold on a second. Here we go. That's gorgeous. I think there's something else here, so hold on just one second. You know, you know what I like? I have an idea what this might be.
It's Pepsi.
Hold on. It's like Christmas, only stressful. Just a beautiful bottle in a single malt, repping Waco in the best possible way. So thank you, guys, so very much. I appreciate you. It was fantastic.[1779.04][1779.04](applause)
Well, John, I appreciate everything that I learned from you in the two years that we have, two and a half, that we've served on council, but as soon as I got to Waco, we... But as soon as I got to Waco, we, our paths crossed, and it's just kind of been a fantastic friendship ever since. The, Waco's relationship with the National League of Cities has advanced so much under your leadership, and I hope to continue to, continue that, that, that mark that we will make, not only bringing resources and information to the city of Waco, but also sharing our expertise with the National League of Cities. You know, I think that, that, that as we go forward, other councilmembers will get active and engaged, but a lot of that is due to the precedent that you set during your time and tenure at Waco, as Waco City Councilmember, and also as an NLC board, board member. So, we are grateful for the leadership that you brought, the expertise that you brought, and the voice that you lent to the National League of Cities, but also the information that you brought to the city and citizens of Waco. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead. John, it's really been a pleasure serving for you the last eight and a half years, and you have brought real strategic thinking to the council. And as Bradley mentioned, the work you've done in DC, and as Andrea mentioned, the work you've done with NLC, have both benefited our city tremendously. You've brought new ideas, new projects, new programs, and it's just, it's been a pleasure to serve with you, and I'll be interested to see what you do next, because I think there are more great things in your future. And you're just, you're very smart about the way you approach these things, and that's, that's been a real blessing for the council.
Uh, this is Holmes. Johnny, I'll go next. You know, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve you, of course. John has become a good friend over the years, and it's, we've solved a lot of the city's problems and the world's problems over, over coffee and beverages many times, but I learned a lot from John, and I appreciate that. Three things really come to mind when I think of John. One of them is his quick mind. You know, his logic path is very highly developed, a very good thought process, and his conclusions always kind of have an edge to them, always have some color to them, which I appreciate, that he brings that life to his, his thought process. The second thing I think of with John is his conviction. You know, there's nothing quite like listening to John when he's convinced that he's right. You know, he's very colorful in that respect. And, and he's right a lot of the time, I'll say. One thing, and just maybe echo what Andrea said, just your sense of civic involvement is astronomical, and it's amazing. Just think of a few things you've done for the city. You headed up to appraisal district, convention center, public health district, zoo board, budget nodding, creative arts. You've advanced all of those things. Not just then, you were at the meeting, John. You were leading that meeting, and you were leading the charge, and a great example for the rest of us on council. And not only that, on a local level, but also on a national level. As Andrea said, with NLC, with National League of Cities, you were board member on a national level and brought a lot of strength to that organization as well as representing Waco on a national level. You've always been taking those leadership positions and left those boards and those committees in better shape than they were when you got there. And you've always had Waco's best interests at heart. And I know that you're gonna stay plugged into Waco City issues. I think we're all counting on that, John. And you've been a great councilman, you've been a great friend. You'll no longer be a councilman, but you'll always be a great friend. So, thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
And I guess I'll take it from here. John, going back to kind of what Hector said, you know, when we first met for coffee when I was first interested in getting on council, I will literally never forget, we met at Pinewood, and you came in with your N-95 mask on, which like, doesn't sound like much of a big deal, but this was two and a half or three weeks before any sort of mask mandate from, from any level of government had come down. And as we were walking across to go from the coffee shop to the pub for more seating, you just made a comment about how you wish more people would have their masks on. And that wound up sort of being your defining characteristic. Not that you want people to wear masks, but that, that you're sort of always a couple of steps, a couple of steps ahead of where we are right now as a city, and you're always thinking ahead, and you're always thinking ahead for the better. And I think that, that sort of example encapsulates that perfectly. You're always looking for what is the next thing that you can push for at a, at a city level to help better our city. And I, again, it's been such a short time. I know that our friendship outside of this is going to continue, and I can't say thank you enough as, as a friend. I can't say thank you enough as a fellow councilmember, and I can't say thank you enough as a citizen of Waco that gets through the benefits of so many things that your fingerprints are on that have come to this city as a result of the hard work that you've put in. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, guys.
Well, I think that was all of our councilmembers. I have to share with the council and the public, this is awkward. It is a different way of us doing presentations, so thank you for bearing with us as, as we make the presentations. But our next presentation will be from Councilmember Holmes.
Yes. I don't have a package or anything here, but this, Kyle, this is for you. I hope you have it there, and I forget. I do the, I do the little thing first, and then you can open it up. But Kyle, it's been my honor and privilege to serve on your council these past four years. And I know your, your service to this city has been, you know, outstanding. It's not just the four years as mayor, but you also had four years as councilman before that, and six years on plan commission before that. So, we're talking about 14 years of consecutive public service, which is, it's incredible, and it's outstanding, and you have Waco's best interests at heart, no doubt. You've always demonstrated command of the issues, a high level of professionalism, dignity, leadership, and a steadiness that I've always admired. And you raise everyone's game. Everyone on council knows that when they come to council, they need to know what they're talking about, and they need to be on top of the issue, as you always are. Waco, in these last four years while you've been at the helm, has experienced unprecedented prosperity and growth. And just a few of the things, the downtown Waco development on both sides of the river, city streets program, new under your leadership, the I-35 project, how we, how you navigated that, the zoo bonding, the growth of creative arts, the development of Prosper Waco, the Heart of Texas Event Center, moving council towards goals of equity and inclusion, fixing the suspension bridge, and then your support of small businesses. I could go on and on here, Kyle, and you know all the great work that you've done. And just when you thought your work was done in May, probably the biggest challenge of our time on council was the COVID crisis. And I can remember early on in conversations with you as we were trying to figure out what to do, you always seemed to be a step or two ahead. And I was thinking, well, Kyle, I think that's the right thing to do, we would do it. And you, but you kept the city a couple of weeks ahead of the rest of the nation on, on dealing with this crisis and keeping, keeping even tempered and a steady, a steady hand with the wheel, and I appreciate that. And your weekly fireside chats, if you will, you kept, you kept this community together. I appreciate you. I appreciate your great family. Ray and Ellen are great folks. Your brother John's a cool guy. Your wife Diane and kids, just, it's, it's, you got a great, great family. You've always led with the spirit of progress, you've led with the spirit of fearlessness, and you've led with the spirit of collegiality, which I appreciate. You've been, you've just been a fantastic mayor, Kyle, by all accounts. And you'll be missed, and I just want to thank you for your service to Waco with this gift that I will send you virtually. So, thanks, Kyle.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. I'll, I will open the gift. I did take the ribbon off as well, following John's smart lead on that. Can't hear the paper ripping. Oh, wow. Oohs. Awesome. These are from the City Ranch Boot Company right here in Waco. Those are beautiful. Thank you all very much. That's, that's really, really a nice gift that I will, I certainly will enjoy. But thank you all. And Jim, thank you so much for your, your kind words. Everything that you mentioned, all those accomplishments, were the council's accomplishments, accomplishments, and the, and the staff's accomplishments and the city's accomplishments. And I, I appreciate getting given, having given, been given some credit for those, but good grief, I mean, those are all, a lot of you, I mean, John Canard, you and others have led the work that caused those things to happen. So, thank you for that, but I'm, I'm humbled by it. Thank you.
Who's going first?
Is this where we respond? Sorry, I'm still trying to keep track of, okay, yeah, sorry, thanks, I'm wrong. No, and I'll just, I mean, it's, and it's that humility that made you such a great mayor, and that willingness to, to share, to listen, to collaborate, to, um... Just to, the, I don't know, the humanity you brought to the position and the empathy, and the, I don't know, just the care and the deliberateness. I have been, it's been truly an honor to be with you through this entire tenure and, and just, just watch you lead and to be able to follow your example. I've learned so much. You made my job easier. You stepped in front of some, you know, fast-moving trains to take some, you know, take whatever metaphor you wanna use. You took the brunt of a lot of things that were not your, not yours to bear, but you did it because it's, it's the work, and it was the position we were in. And I'll, I was appreciative of that, and always did my best to support and come behind, and you had to put up with me quite a bit in my agitation. But it's, it's been a fun, I mean, almost decade now. This has been, this has been, we, we did a lot of great things together, and, and I'm appreciative for you and all that you've taught me in your leadership.
Kyle, I also want to say it has been a true honor to serve under your leadership. I have seen you deal with crises, especially this year, over and over, and you did it with such grace, with such compassion, with such, with so much wisdom and integrity coming forth. And I know that there are very few cities that can say that their mayor has definitely stepped up to, stepped up to the challenge. But yes, sir, you have in every aspect. You have taken time out to listen to every single concern from each councilmember. You have pulled us together and caused us to make a decision even when we didn't want to, because we all have strong personalities, but yet, your calmness and your easiness about you has just made, it's been a true pleasure to work under you, and I'm gonna miss working with you, sir, but I cannot thank you enough. You have definitely served as a mentor for me the year and a half that I've been on council, and, and I hope that we will continue to work on future projects in the future, because it would be an absolute honor, sir. So, thank you for everything that you've done for Waco.
Thank you, Hector. And thank you, John. I was on mute when I was thinking of you earlier.
I'll go ahead. I, every time I have to talk, it's funny, because I have this sort of relationship with everyone, but I think it goes to show that the impact that you guys have had on, on me in this short amount of time, and just how many more folds that is on the people that have known me for, for longer than this. I can confidently say that anytime there's been a contested issue at a council meeting or any sort of, any sort of meeting we've all been on together, specifically, you know, it's all been Zoom calls up to this point, but any anxiety or fear or, you know, uncertainty sort of goes away once you begin to speak about the issue. And so, your demeanor and your leadership and the way that you really, you really have a way to make everyone feel heard, even if you disagree with them. You have a really special way about you in that way. I can't thank you enough just for the help you've been to me and coming on council. Like, like you said, it's, it's, it was a crazy time to do so, and just being there, calling me, checking in, things I quite literally will never forget. So, thank you so much for that. It's been an absolute honor to be able to say I was on council with you, and I look forward to continuing our relationship and friendship past the time where it's gotta be confined to computer screens. So, thank you again just for what you've taught me. Oh, I'm going long with this so quick. I meant to say this earlier. I should have written this down. Sorry, last example, and then I'm done. There was an issue once that came up, and the same person had contacted both of us about this vote, and you emailed me, and you said, hey, I think this guy might reach out to you. I don't know what you said, but here's my response. And I told you, I was like, yeah, I said, you know, thanks for your input, and I expected something similar from you, but it was like this thousand-word, really thoughtful and incredibly caring response that, again, you know, makes, even if they're in opposition, they feel heard, they feel cared for, they feel that even if you are going to not do what they want you to do, that you really sat with the weight of that. And that's invaluable in the positions that you've had for the last, I guess, decade plus. But thank you for this short amount of time I've been able to get a snippet of that.
Thank you, Darius. I really appreciate that.
Mayor, I, I wanted to say that, that while I haven't served that, that long with you as Jim has or, or John has, our, our relationship goes back to when the Coke machine was 10 cents in the KWTX studio on Boski. So, I appreciate having known who you were since that time. What I will say is that you are a true servant leader in that the consideration of, of, of Waco, of even our surrounding areas is always first and foremost on your mind when you make decisions, and it is evident in the process that you take in making those decisions. We learned a great deal under your leadership, not necessarily about anything complicated, just about the way you do anything is I was always taught is the way you do everything. And we've seen you take such consideration with even the smallest or the least of these, and, and especially with those that are incredibly impactful to not only citizens but our city. I, I watched a shift in you since I've sat in this seat and, and seen it grow. I mean, I'm sure it was there forever, but it, it's when, when you, when you get pushed and you have an opportunity to really see what, what it takes when you push somebody to run. And I will never forget the opportunity that you took at Ridgewood Country Club to say and, and boldly declare that racial equity is a priority for the city of Waco. That's, that, that flipped a switch. You know, when you said before any other many cities that, you know, we needed to shelter in place and do things to protect ourselves and our citizens in the unknown challenges and perils of COVID-19, that flipped a switch. And even when you were standing on the stage with kids at Feast in the East, you know, the importance of being with the community members and, and in good times, that flipped a switch. And so, I just, I, I, these words are rambled, but they are meant to say that I appreciate everything that I have seen in you. I have grown under you. You have served as a fantastic leader for the city of Waco. We appreciate each and every hard decision that you've had to make, every sacrifice that you've had to make. And now you get a chance to be a, a good citizen of Waco. We don't want any trouble over there out of District 5 here. But, um...
Thank you tonight.
Listen! But we appreciate everything that you've done, and this rest that you'll take is well-deserved, sir. So, thank you.
Thank you, Andrea, and I, and all I'm saying to each of you is thank you. I have so much more to say to you, but I recognize that we are running long, and I don't want to, I don't want to be long-winded here. I do have some closing remarks that I want to give, but I just appreciate so much each of you, and the time I've had with, with each of you has been really special. So, thank you.
Mayor and council, if I may, in addition, we had some coordination and work behind the scenes to provide you with an additional gift. So, there's an additional gift from the city of Waco, it's a small, square one. I'm sorry, there's probably a ribbon on it, unless you're prepped. You can open that all at the same time, Councilmember Canard.
Cool. That's great.
Oh, nice.
That you'll each.
If you can see that. That's the, uh, uh,
That's important.
One of the toilet murals from, uh, from the masking campaign. That's really neat. Thank you.
That's amazing. Perfectly encapsulates, uh, the season of council.
And, and in addition to that, of course, every council member will receive one of those, uh, frames.
That, that my girlfriend Julie created, just to make sure.
And that just so happened, I didn't need to put it together.
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, next on the agenda, we are going to transition to the, um, presentations to continue those for Mayor Dever. Um, and I will ask Julie if she can, uh, promote Stephanie Alberini, who is the Public Health District Coordinator, and she is going to do a presentation on behalf of the Public Health District and the COVID-19 Response Team. Stephanie, are, are you there? Hi, Stephanie. Uh, and Mayor, there is a, a small, or not a small, but a blue box from the Health District, and that's what Stephanie will be presenting.
Yes. Good evening. Um, thank you all for having me and allowing me to make this presentation. Um, I'm here tonight representing the Health District's COVID-19 Response Team. Um, and our team has been working since January to understand this crazy disease and its impact on the community and to better communicate that information to the public. And while that's really just a short time, um, in comparison to the experiences of everybody else that's presented tonight, it certainly feels like a lot longer. And, um, we definitely have observed the same sentiments that, um, you all have experienced and shared. Um, and we've certainly experienced many challenges and difficulties over these last few months, but we're so appreciative, Mayor Dever, of your leadership during this time. Um, you've been a really great ally for public health and, um, we know this is not how you envisioned, um, your last few months of your term, but, um, we wanted to make sure you knew just how thankful we were. Um, we did put together, uh, another small token of our appreciation in your stack of presents over there, um, and it reads, "With great appreciation, the Waco McLennan County Public Health District COVID-19 Response Team recognizes Mayor Kyle Dever for his unwavering dedication to the public's health, their, public's health during the response to the COVID-19 pandemic." And I also have a letter that we put together that I just wanted to read. Um, "Dear Mayor Dever, on behalf of the Waco McLennan County Public Health District's COVID-19 Response Team, we would like to express our sincerest gratitude for your support during this response. The challenges presented by this pandemic have been unprecedented. A brand-new virus, shelter-in-place orders, more questions than answers. Through it all, your dedication to the health and well-being of the residents of Waco have, has been unwavering. You understood the importance of keeping the public informed and engaged and strongly championed the messages of public health. And while other health departments have had to convince their leadership to act in response to this public health emergency, you've always been proactive and supportive of recommendations from public health, and we understand the difficult decisions you've had to make. Your willingness to take action in the face of public scrutiny is so appreciated. Through all the public support or lack thereof, you consistently showed a level of compassion and personal responsibility that is increasingly rare in public office these days. And while we hope that this pandemic is a once-in-a-lifetime event, the example of your leadership is something that this community will remember and draw from for years to come. Waco has been so fortunate to have you at the helm, and those of us on the front lines of public health, uh, the, the public health response will be forever grateful for your support and leadership. Sincerely, the COVID-19 Response Team." Thank you very much, Mayor.
Stephanie, thank you very much. Um, you guys, uh, at the Health District and the EOC and our healthcare providers and our first responders are the heroes. And we all know that, um, and I, I appreciate, I appreciate the recognition, but I just, I, I am so in awe of the work that you all do every day and especially right now in the middle of this pandemic. So, thank you all for, for everything that you continue to do and that you will continue to do after, uh, with, with a new mayor and a new council. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor and Council, um, we're switching the order just a little bit, um, because I will need to, uh, run, it's not like my daughters run, but as fast as I can across from here to the Boski Theater to swear in, swearing in new council members. Uh, but I'm going to share my screen, um, and present, um, what we do. Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay. So, what, we, every, uh, mayor that has come off since I've started as city, Assistant City Secretary, City Secretary, we prepare a book that goes into our vault. It's a mayor book and it presents the, um, highlights the accomplishments. And, uh, this book was difficult for many reasons, since during a COVID season, there's a lot to put in the book. Um, and, uh, but I wanted to just quickly run through it. It'll be delivered, Mayor, to you and your family, and we will also keep it in the official records for the city of Waco forever. Um, and so, I just wanted to quickly flip through it. And I'm glad I'm doing this before the, uh, video because it's probably not as fancy as the video. Um, so, there was a contribution by several family members to your book and this, it's, uh, you won't be able to read them, but you will once, uh, it arrives. Uh, but they've had shared several different comments from the time you first took office. Um, are you able to see?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if this room can see it, but, um, this is the, uh, from when you first started the oath of office as council member for District Five through the time that, uh, you shook hands with Mayor Malcolm Duncan Jr. and became mayor. Um, and then, of course, we've got our group photos, which for history, we will have a group photo of, uh, Zoom of this year, uh, being a true friend from the moment. Um, uh, for the work that you've done in support of many, I'm getting a call now that's probably telling me that we can't see this on the big screen.
It is true.
Well, that looks really amazing. Esmeralda, I can't wait to, to read it and, and look at the pictures. Thank you so much for putting, putting that together. That's really kind.
Well, I'm going to stop it because it's not working and Bradley, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right. Thanks, Esmeralda, and, uh, take your time getting down the, down the stairs and over to the Boski Theater. We don't need a worker's comp injury or something. While she makes her way over, um, and prepares to administer the oath of offices, um, I would ask, uh, the team to go ahead and play the video that Municipal Information has prepared for Mayor Dever. Um, I recognize there might be, um, the room may not see it, but I believe Mayor Dever can see and hear it from his place on the, uh, the virtual meeting. So, if we could play that at this point.
Thank you, Mayor.
We really appreciate all your hard work and your leadership over the past four and a half years and especially the last few months. You've done a really, really good job. We love you.
You're the best. We love you so much. Can you say I love you?
Yeah, you say.
Love you.
Congratulations, Mayor. We are so excited that you're finally done. And we are so proud of all the work that you've done in Waco. You've done such an amazing job and handled everything so gracefully. Uh, we couldn't be more proud of the leader that you are. Uh, and we are so excited to have you back, um, to get to spend more time with you and so that you can spend more time with Ellie. And we love you and we are excited to get to celebrate soon.
Thank you so much for everything, Kyle. We're really excited to get to spend time with you. And, uh, Ellie's really excited to get to spend more time with you, too.
Yay! We love you, Mayor.
Love you, Mayor.
Mwah, mwah, mwah.
Thank you, guys. That's amazing. Thank you. That's just, I mean, that's just, that's just amazing. Thank you.
Well-earned, Mayor. Um, I will, uh, at this point in time, Esmeralda has, uh, has the ability for, um, uh, Councilmember Ewing or Kennard or, or you, Mayor, to provide any closing comments, um, that you'd like to provide.
Yeah, let's start with Councilmember Ewing.
Great. Uh, I think, I might have jumped the gun a little bit earlier, but I'll, I'll run it down again. This is great. Um, sincerely, uh, has been, um, something that has brought so much joy and light in my life is serving alongside of, of everyone on this call and then, you know, additionally, everyone else on, on city staff and having the chance to, um, partake in, in these, these complex issues that, that, um, change the way that people's lives look. Um, and I'm so excited, um, that I get to continue these friendships with all of you, uh, going forward. Uh, and I said it before and I'll say it again, I truly, uh, there are words to describe the, just the, the feeling, um, that knowing that I served alongside all of you gives me and the opportunity to, to do it all. And, and, uh, as far as members of council and mayor, you guys took a huge chance on, on a kid to, to join you on city council and, uh, I really hope I didn't let you down. Um, and I thank you all so much for that opportunity and just the way that I've been able to grow, uh, in this short amount of time. I feel like I've aged, you know, 10 years in the last four months. So, uh, thank you guys for that opportunity and I look forward to continuing to work with you guys, uh, in various capacities, uh, in the future. So, thanks.
All right, I guess it's my turn. Um, you know, like I said, I've got, I've got eight years' worth of thoughts and I'll try to be, you know, a bit brief, but, you know, when I, when I started doing this, you know, a little long ago, I didn't know what I was doing. Uh, and now, you know, eight and a half years after that, I still have no idea what I'm doing, but at least I've got a lot of experience in not knowing what I'm doing. Um, and, and given the opportunity like this to make open-ended remarks, uh, I usually just kind of devolve into, you know, self-deprecating asides, some general platitudes and maybe the awkward, uh, attempt to make a that's what she said joke. Uh, but that's a factor that counts. Um, but, but at the end of it, I, I, I hope that, uh, through all this work, I've, I've come across that I'm enjoying myself, that I've had a lot of fun, that doing this work is great, um, and that I've tried very hard to take the work seriously, but, uh, never wanted to do that to myself. Um, and when I've thought back to all the service that I've been able to give, um, I think that I've just wanted to give the city what this role, this position has given me, um, which is the constant chance to grow and learn and just be better than I was. And, you know, I, I, y'all really did kind of, you know, you know, pegged me there about just my, my intention for bringing, trying to bring new ideas, new programs, new, new work to the city, something different. Um, that's, that's hard at times. Disruption is hard. Change is hard. Um, you know, I, I hated hearing, you know, this way we've always done it. I've, I just, I, I like seeing things for, I like changing things for the, for the, you know, not for the sake of change, but because I believe that things can be better. Um, and I think that sometimes we can make it unnecessarily difficult on ourselves, uh, just because we're, we're afraid of change. Um, my, my diverse interaction with the National League of Cities and my peers from across the country have, have really kind of helped grow and, and lead me and bring me a good perspective that there is, uh, so many great things out there that I just, I saw so many that I just wanted to bring here to us, to make us better and to incorporate into our lives, into our community for, uh, just for the good of our community and just to, just to bring them home for us. Um, and so, I've, I've pushed and I agitate, um, because I feel it's the right thing to do and I, I want to do it for the city. Um, it, it, a phrase that, uh, I heard about a year ago at an NLC convening, uh, that talked about, we, we were talking about affordable housing and it was a lead paint convening, actually, was, uh, someone mentioned the courage of common sense. Um, and that, that is something that I have strove to have and to share and to give back. Um, that reasonableness and willingness to look beyond what, what we have to what can be, uh, wanting to work for the greater good, not expecting anything in return, um, and just moving towards our communal betterment. Uh, we all serve the city and, you know, and I, I've appreciated this role and the ability to be, uh, a voice for my constituents and for all, but particularly, you know, I think, and this can be so missed in, in positions like this, to be the voice for those that don't have one. Um, and, and our best work is that which gives everyone a chance to make their lives better. And so, you know, I mean, I know for us, uh, you know, I, I think Fixer Upper merely just gave, you know, light to all of the amazing things that are already going on in this community. Um, I don't think the interest would have been there nationally if we weren't already fantastic. Uh, and when that, when that, when our profile began to rise in this, you know, at that first, uh, few years back, you know, I, I would, I would hear someone say, well, who would have thought, you know, little old Waco could, you know, be this? It's like, no, I did, because I know who we are and I know who we can be. And I've pushed and just wanted to make sure everyone in this community can realize that, can embrace, um, just the awesomeness that we are and make and want to be better than we ever thought possible. Um, and so, I'm, I'm, I'm proud of us. I'm proud for the work that we have been moving forward to be a, uh, an innovative, a forward-thinking, and inclusive, and a thriving city, uh, if we choose to be. And, and that takes vision. Um, it takes being comfortable with being uncomfortable. Um, it takes working strategically and purposefully, uh, to promote equity and the good of all. So, it's been a privilege to serve in this role and to do my part to make it a better place. I'm gonna miss it, most of it. Um, uh, and I, I don't think I'm done serving and I'll be curious to see what, uh, what opportunities present themselves down the road. Uh, but in the meantime, I, I am very much looking forward to many fewer meetings, uh, and the ability to maybe actually do, dig in a bit and do some of the, some of the work again, which, which will, which will be good for me. Uh, and so, so a bit of thanks and I'll be done. Uh, I want to thank my girlfriend Julie, uh, my match in heart and soul, uh, whose boundless love, enthusiasm, and optimism is a necessary help and balance for a cynical jerk such as myself. Um, she, she's very good for me. Uh, and also, I, I really, really need to recognize my employer, Community Bank and Trust. Um, thank my colleagues for their understanding, um, in my considerable absences and just my, the constraints of my time, uh, as, as well as bank management and especially David Lacy. Um, he's given so much to this community in general, uh, and it, and he was the one that gave me the opportunity and encouragement to pursue this in the first place, you know, nine years ago. Um, doing this work right requires a considerable amount of time and energy, and that balance can put a strain on that, that employee-employer relationship. Um, but absent his support, I couldn't have done this. Um, he's been one of my biggest encouragers and champions and has always seen the potential in me before I knew it. Um, and so, I just, I want to say thank you specifically to David, uh, for allowing me the broad space in which to grow and to serve, um, and for all of the support and encouragement that he's given me to this. Um, and, and finally, to all of, all of the city folks here that we see, the city staff, thanks for putting up with my, you know, my agitating, some of my occasional belligerence, uh, my freneticness, uh, my excitability. Um, y'all, y'all dealt with a lot. So, it, but I, I appreciate you and your responsiveness and, and all the good things we've been able to do together. Um, I can say that in terms of our city manager, we have the right person in that role, uh, to lead this city forward. And, uh, in council, y'all better know that he'll make y'all look good if you let him. Um, he's, 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 he's gonna do some great things. Kyle, it's been a joy serving with you my entire tenure here. Um, I appreciate your leadership, again, especially during these last few extra-difficult months. Um, Darius, you're just getting started. There's a lot of good stuff coming for you and, uh, I'm thankful for the time we were able to work together. Uh, I want to go ahead and say congrats to Kelly and Josh, uh, who will be sworn in soon. Um, they're, I'm looking forward to working with y'all. Um, and I'm want to make myself available as a resource as y'all. And I want to make myself available as a resource as y'all become, as y'all get acclimated to the role and begin serving and doing good for the city. To my council colleagues that I leave behind, and I'm just going to lump Dylan into this because his little break doesn't count, this work has been all the better because I've been able to do it with the people that I consider true friends. And I think we, you know, I have worked across the country with people. And the dynamic that we have, the collegiality, the collaboration, and the friendship that we share is truly a rare, precious, and treasured thing that has made this work all the more fun and all the more valuable, and most importantly, all the more productive. So this is, this really has, this has been a hell of a lot of fun. I love all you guys. I'm just not going anywhere. I feel like I'm, you know, I'm going to be moving, no, I'm just, but it's, it's great. I really just appreciate it and enjoyed this time and you guys try not to miss me too much. Thank you all.
Thank you, John. Well said and exactly what I would expect you to say, so awesome. I'm going to try to be brief. I recognize that we've got a new mayor and councilmembers who want to be sworn in and some of them have small children who have been extremely patient and moms who have been extremely patient. So let me just say as quickly as I can. First of all, I've had the rare opportunity in eight and a half years on council working with four different city managers, which you would think would mean we had a lot of problems at the city manager position. But we've had four fantastic city managers, starting with Larry Growth. And then as mayor, I worked with three city managers, Dale Fissler, Wiley Sten, and now Bradley. And all four of those gentlemen provided amazing leadership in the CEO position of our city in completely different ways. And I couldn't be more excited about our current city manager, Bradley. You are going to light a fire under our city and the organization and the strategic way that you're going about things. I'm really, really excited about. So I appreciate your really thoughtful words to me earlier. And I was trying to be brief. I may have been too brief, but those words at home and I thank you for them. And then at our other three appointed positions, we've had the same people there for that entire time. And that's a blessing. I mean, Jennifer, I believe you are an excellent city attorney. We are so fortunate to have you in that role. And the team that you lead is outstanding and really appreciate the good work that you do there every day. It's very committed work and it's really important work. And Esmeralda, thank you for all that you do for us to try to keep the council organized and keep us out of trouble. And of course, Jennifer tries to keep us out of trouble, too. But as far as keeping us out of trouble with, you know, our open records requirements and our public reports and all the good work that you do to keep us going. And Judge Chris Taylor, many people don't know the municipal Judge Chris Taylor. We are really fortunate to have Chris in that role because he is so focused on true justice and not just criminal justice. It's trying to help people work through difficult times and he does it in a really, really smart way. Specifically with regard to our COVID-19 response, I was glad to have the chance to thank Stephanie earlier, but I want to thank everybody at the Flannan County Public Health District and our Emergency Operations Center. And I need to especially highlight our deputy city manager, Deidre Emerson. Deidre has just provided great leadership in that area. And, you know, I think people who don't know government, who have never had the experience of working with these professional government leaders, don't have any idea how fortunate we are to have them leading our city. Everybody I just mentioned and so many of our department leaders and just work your way down. These people care about our city. They care about taking care of you and your needs and they are responsive. If you call them, they will answer the phone. It's just not like what you think government is going to be like. And that's been one of Diane and my most enlightening revelations is that we've got people here that really care about serving our community. So thank you all for that. I do want to thank every council member that I've worked with. I've learned something from every single one of you. And, you know, including former council members. I still miss Wilbur and, you know, I miss working with Alice. And there have been people that have really touched me along the way. And each of you that I've had a chance to work with for the last few years, me and the world and me, and you're my friends and my colleagues. And I will, I will continue to seek you out and including, and John and I may have a drink next council meeting. We'll include Darius in that as well. I really have to pause and thank former mayor Malcolm Duncan Jr., who I lit up his phone for the first several months that I was mayor, asking him for advice about how to handle this or that. And Malcolm was always there and continues to be today. So I appreciate him so much. And Virginia, former mayor Virginia Dupuy, and former mayor Mike Morrison, who interestingly were both my teachers. Virginia in elementary school and Mike in law school. So I have always looked up to them and they have provided me really good, important advice on items where they had the best answers. I've had so many friends, Diane and I have so many great friends in Waco and many outside of Waco who have paid attention to our term, our time serving as mayor and first lady of Waco and have been so supportive and interested. And I am really grateful to those friends and friendships that we have there. And like John, I need to thank my coworkers and my business associates at American Bank and American Guaranteed title because I have been away from those businesses a lot. And not only that, but when you are on council or serving as mayor, you have to walk away from a lot of business that you may have been doing with the city or in areas where you might potentially have some kind of conflict of interest. And so they've had to walk away from a lot of business during this time and they've been very patient with that and supportive. Finally, I need to talk a little bit about my family. My brother John is my business partner, my law partner, my brother and my best friend. And he has just carried our business through this time, especially the last four and a half years as mayor and particularly the last several months during COVID where I've just been completely unavailable to the business. His wife Karina and their daughter Alexandra have always been supportive and I am so grateful for that and ready to get back to something more normal with working with John again. My parents, Ellen and Ray Dever, have been 100% engaged and 100% supportive. Sometimes calling me to tell me I said the wrong thing, but I appreciate that, too. And then, you know, Diane and I were talking, when I started on council eight and a half years ago, we were a family of four. It was Diane and me and my son Nick and my daughter Morgan. And eight and a half years, they have both chosen fantastic spouses. Anna Louise has married our son Nick and Scott Snyder has married my daughter, our daughter, I should say, our daughter, Morgan. And now in the last three years, we've had three grandchildren. And so my family has, especially, especially my kids, have just engaged and are interested in our city in a way that I never was prior to being involved with this council. And I see that with a lot of young people in our community. It gives me tremendous optimism about our future. But just seeing them in that video meant the world to me. And so thank you to our municipal information folks, Larry and your team, for putting that together and letting me have that little sweet moment. Last, almost last, I shouldn't say last because it's not quite last, but very importantly, I want to thank the citizens of Waco for allowing me to serve as your mayor for the past four and a half years. It's not always been easy, but it has been a true privilege and it has been a real inspiration to see our community progress and grow. I believe our city is on a path to greatness. The groundwork for this success was laid by our predecessors, by former mayors, by former city council members, by former outstanding city staff and business leaders, community leaders, volunteers, and just citizens all around. This council has done our part to build on that groundwork. And now it is up to the next generation of leaders to move us forward. And I'm looking at our new mayor, Dylan, and the elected city council for 2020, '21, especially the new council members, Josh and Kelly. And I could not be more optimistic about Waco's future. You guys are going to do great things and I can't wait to watch it. And now it's time to square in these newly-elected and re-elected leaders for our city. So I will turn it over to Esmeralda so she can do the work.
Thank you, Mayor. If the newly-elected council members will meet me at, on the stage. And Larry Hosey will tell you where to stand.
Esmeralda, are we supposed to log out at this point?
We can, yes, and we will, we will.
Or just sit quietly.
When the new council members sit at the dais, we'll move you to attendees.
And for the mayor, stand right here. Joshua, stand right here. Is that right, Mark?
Yeah.
Hi. Are you ready? Hey, if you will raise your right hand and you'll repeat after me, where I say my name, you'll say your name. I, Esmeralda Hudson, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of City of Waco, council member, of the state of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States, of this state, and the City of Waco. So help me God. Congratulations. If our new council members will, they may sit at the dais. Your seats are kind of tentative right now until we get the full order.
Good evening, everyone. The next order of business, actually, the first order of business is fun because my first meeting is mayor and we're having to vote to extend this meeting because one of the rules, City Attorney Jennifer Ritchie, could you explain this rule, please?
I don't know that I have a mic, but council has a resolution that if we extend, have a meeting, it goes past 8:30. Majority of the council has to vote to extend past 8:30. The new council does that back to me against the base service, meaning like non-spatable.
Is there a motion on this item?
I move, I move to extend. This is Holmes.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, Councilman Holmes, do you move to extend it to 9:00 PM?
Yes. Move to extend to 9:00 PM.
City Secretary, would you please poll the council?
Yes, sir. Holmes?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Borderoos?
Aye.
Councilmember Sabido?
Yes. Hey, Esmeralda, we can barely hear you over here.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, well, I'm better.
Councilmember Bearfield?
Yes.
Yes. Our next order of business is to consider Resolution 2020-844 designating one of the council members as mayor pro tem of the City of Waco. Is there a motion?
This is Holmes again. Mayor and council is the first action of this new council. It is my honor and privilege to nominate Hector Sabido as our next mayor pro tem.
Second.
City Secretary, would you please poll the council?
Holmes?
Aye.
Palmer? Borderoos?
Yes.
Sabido?
Yes.
Bearfield? Meek?
Yes, that motion passes. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Sabido. At this time, I would like to give the elected council members a moment to say a few words. And we will start with Councilmember Palmer.
All righty, thank you, Mayor Meek. I just wanted to say a thank you to my lovely husband, Matthew, and to my incredible team that's here. This was such a blast running this campaign the last few months, imagining a more beautiful and equitable Waco. And to the 50-plus volunteers that joined us in cleaning up trash in District 4 and canvassing and running away from stray dogs. I'm so thankful for you and grateful to get to work serving our great city.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Borderoos?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Mayor Dever and John Kennard, if they're still listening, still on the call, for their eight and a half years of service. The mayor showed a lot of courage in his tenure, in his steadfast leadership. John Kennard has been a real friend and advisor to me and has mentored me along this process. And I hope to continue to learn from him going forward. But I'm very grateful for everything he's done for our city and for our District 3. My parents are here tonight, Scott and Carol Borderoos. They're both veterans and they have served our country and our God all over the United States and the world. And it is such an honor that they're here tonight. We've often lived so far apart and to be able to share this moment tonight is very special for me and for them to come down. They now live in Burleson, but Mom and Dad, thank you for being here. And I hope that my service on the council will honor your service that you've given to so many people. And I hope to make just a fraction of impact that you have on so many lives. I also want to thank my wife, Jennifer, who is the love of my life and really my chief advisor and the person that has all the better judgment in our marriage. I am so grateful for the role she has played in me becoming the person I am today. I'm so grateful for my two children, RC and Lily, who are now officially past their bedtime. They are my pride and joy and I hope that this city council service does not interfere in our watching The Mandalorian every Friday night. But I want to thank everyone in District 3 who voted for me or who didn't vote for me, but who was engaged in this process. And I hope to continue to earn their support going forward with openness and honesty and transparency and service to make District 3 a better place and working with this wonderful council. I look forward to rejoining Councilmember Bearfield and Councilmember Sabido when we used to sit up here on the Plan Commission. My law school friend and neighbor of the last decade, Dylan Meek. My new friend and fellow military brat, Kelly Palmer, as well as Jim Holmes, who's been a wonderful advisor as well. And this is a new journey and I look forward to embracing it with humility and service with this great group of people.
And Councilmember Bearfield?
Thank you again for allowing me another opportunity to bring truth, vision, and voice to District 1. It is my pleasure to serve and continue to serve the people who make this, this community, this city, one of the best ones ever in the planet. I serve at the pleasure and ability because of the backbone that is, that I have, which is my family. My husband Elijah, my two children Drew and Jackson, my mother in love, and the village that stands with me. I appreciate everything that you have done to help us get through these first two and a half years and continue with these next two years. We are dedicated to this work with our new members, with our members who we've served with in the past couple of years, our amazing city management team and staff. Y'all, we have all the pieces to the puzzle. We have all the pieces to the puzzle. And so it was my pleasure to continue to walk this walk with the people of this city and with these members of city council and our new mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. I will land the plane. Actually, we're going to give Councilmember Sabido and Councilmember Holmes a chance to comment after this, but I'll go into action and just say- go, go into action and just say what an honor, what a privilege. I'm so humbled to be able to serve in this role. I'm excited about this work because it's a team sport. And a lot of people have said in the last couple of days, are you nervous about stepping into leadership in 2020? And the reason that maybe, maybe I'm naive to say I'm not, but it's because of this team. We've got an incredible council and I'm so excited to work with Councilmember Palmer, Councilmember Border Reed, Councilmember Bearfield, Sabido and Holmes, to be back in the trenches with my old colleagues, to get to work with these bright, sharp minds. It is a team sport and we are going to do great things together. To echo what Councilmember Bearfield said, the puzzle pieces are on the table. We've got what we need to move forward. I gotta give a shout out to the love of my life, my wife, who snuck out because our kids are, were coming unhinged, as you could probably see here. But my love of my wife, Lindsay, who is my best friend, my supporter. I'm just such a great, an amazing wife. And I'm so thankful for her. I'm thankful for my kiddos, Maybree and Davis, the fuel that keeps me going. This is the family that I've always dreamed of having. And it's such a blessing to get to do life with them. Thanks to my parents who are watching at home tonight and for their love and undying support for me and our family. Thanks to all of our friends and our community who are there over the years for prayers and support. I can't, like I said, I can't wait to work with this council. We've got a great crew. Bradley, Jennifer, Deidra, Paul, Ryan Galen, Esmeralda, Judge Taylor, all of your staff. Thank you for your tireless work and your tireless efforts in 2020. You've kept Waco moving forward in a very difficult year. And I will continue to support your good work. And I'm excited, I'm excited to work with you all. To my friends, John, Darius and Mayor Dever, who are leaving. John, you're so smart and principled and dedicated. And on a personal note, you've been such a good friend. And I've enjoyed every second of working with you and innovating with you and serving our city together. And I look forward to continuing to work with you, even if it's in a different capacity. Darius, it's been such a joy to see you work for the interests of District Four. You're driven for care for other people and to improve those lives and for, to improve the lives of people in need. And thanks, thank you for your service to our city. And Mayor Dever, you're the leader that Waco needed in this time. You have always taken a thoughtful, careful approach to all matters. You do so with empathy, compassion and pragmatism. And you lead with a selfless and maturity, a selflessness and maturity to always ensure the right thing gets done. What a lesson to me, what a lesson to this town. We are so thankful for your servant leadership. And it is my hope and my plan to carry these traits that you've exemplified to me. I, local government has an incredible power to bless enough people in a way that other levels of government cannot. These officials here are not distant. They are your neighbors. They are connected to our community in a very personal way. And together, I want to extend an invitation to our community to participate in the good work that we will be doing. When I say it's a team sport, yes, I'm excited to work with the colleagues on council and our amazing city staff. I'm excited to work with stakeholders in leadership roles in our city. But the reality is, for our city to become the city that we want it to be, it is going to take all of us working together. And I want to say right now that everyone has a seat at the table to shape and impact the lives of your fellow man and improve Waco. So the invitation has been extended. I want to begin to dialogue with this community about establishing our community goals and moving forward together. I look forward to hearing from you. We've got a lot of challenges ahead of us. We've got a lot of exciting opportunity. So I'm appreciative for the opportunity to work again with the great people at this council table, our colleagues on Zoom. And we have great days ahead. Okay, so we will now turn it over to Councilmember Hector Sabido for any words that he might have.
Thank you, Mayor Meek. I just want to say, Kelly and Josh, welcome to council. I look forward to working with you. My girlfriend, Andrew, said it the best, you know, we have all the pieces to the puzzle to make it work. I have to say that I'm very excited about the work that's taking place now in Waco and the work that's to come. We have what I would consider the best city staff of any city across the United States. And I don't say that lightly, but there's never, we can't do that with them. There's always like, there's responses always, let's make it work and see what we can do. And so I thoroughly appreciate that about them. I know that we have some trying times ahead, but I also believe that we're up for the task. And, and so I look forward to serving, continue serving our city, continue serving our constituency, and most importantly, continue paving the way for Waco to be an equitable and inclusive city for everyone. And so I welcome you again and, and let's get to work.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes, Mayor Meek. You know, it wasn't very long ago when I was four and plus a few months where I was the new guy on council. It doesn't seem very long ago. And now I am the longest continuously serving councilman on this, on this dais. So it's, it's, it's something on my shoulders here. Hey, Dylan, good to have you back. You were a great councilman. You're going to be a great mayor. I'm looking forward to working with you. Kelly Palmer and Josh Border Reed, congratulations first of all and welcome to the council. I mean, you guys bring a lot of energy. I've had a chance to get to know both of you a little bit. And great ideas. And you're going to add a lot to council. And we're depending on you to, to get your ideas into, into the fabric of what we're trying to do here in the city. It's a great team. It's like a family up on council. So welcome to the family, Josh and Kelly. And looking forward to spending some, some long hours trying to figure out city issues. We've got great staff, lean on staff. We've got a lot of, with Bradley and Deidra and Galen and Paul and Chief Holt, just really good leadership that we're able to work with. So I'm looking forward to this great council, great staff, and so many great things in motion right now in the City of Waco. Very excited about it. So let's roll up our sleeves and get to work.
Thank you, Councilmember Holmes. To all of our guests here tonight who are physically distanced and masked, we appreciate you coming. To the city staff who worked to make tonight so special, we thank you for that. And there being no further business, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:34 PM. Thank you.